This time I'd like to call to order the November 4th, 2014 Yukon Oklahoma City Council Meeting. If you would rise with me for the invocation by Pastor Bob Yance and our flag salute.
Let us pray. For all that is right and good about our country and community, oh God, we give you thanks. And for all that is broken and wrong about our country and community, truly we repent, oh God. And now for all that is promising new possibilities and offering good opportunities among us, we pray your holy direction and we seek your goodwill tonight. For those who will be elected this night as public servants in this place and around our country, grant your grace, your wisdom and humility. And for those whose campaign is now ended in defeat, grant them your grace and grant that we might be both gracious and grateful for their willingness to enter into the public arena of public service. Grant these people here tonight, these leaders of our community, wisdom and truth for all their decisions and unify all of us this night in your spirit of grace all across this country. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Alberts?
Russell?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
This is our time for presentations and proclamations.
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
We have none this evening. We enter into our visitor's section of our meeting. This allows visitors, we have a few that have come forward and would like to address the council. We would like you to keep your comments to three minutes or less and I would like to have Brian Filippone come forward. Please state your name and address.
Brian Filippone, 812 Ellsworth Avenue, Yukon. First off, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council for giving us the time to do this. Mine's more informational, I guess, than anything. I know most of you pretty well and back in September on the 16th, we voted for something and I just wanted to make a point. It was ordinance 1301 that had to do with the employee retirement system, keeping us, you know, federally compliant and it was voted yes, four to one. And I just wanted to make sure, I appreciate all you serving and I wished, I didn't live in one of those funky Yukon addresses where I can't serve on the council or I would do that. And I know you guys read through a lot of information and it's a lot of papers to try to keep up on. So I do appreciate that and this is just informational. But my question to the council is, you know, we voted yes on that and it has to do with same-sex spouses and part of the retirement funding for the city. And my question, not really a question, my point would be that, you know, we voted yes for it and, you know, one thing I am proud about, we put up there in God We Trust, which was passed by the council and I appreciate that. And so my question is, do we really? We voted for something that goes against what this country was founded on and that bothers me and hence the reason I'm bringing it up. I know that, you know, whether it's law or not, it's something that we ought to be defending, I believe. And that's important to me and hopefully important to everyone. And so I wanted to bring it to your attention. It has to do with the Windsor Amendment and I understand, you know, not to get into a discussion about the right or the wrong of it, but again, you know, with In God We Trust and what our country was founded on, I think it's time to stand up and, you know, we're going to fear God or are we going to fear man? So that was my point and I appreciate the time and the opportunity to bring it up.
Thank you, Mr. Filippone. I'd like to call up Rick Caccini.
Good evening, City Council Mayor and the audience, our residents and so forth. I'm Rick Caccini, 1140 Landmark Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. However, I do run the museum, the Veterans Museum, and I wanted to take this time to invite everybody to the 2 o'clock PM on Sunday, didn't say 1400, 2 PM on Sunday. We're having a cookout for all the folks here in Yukon and I want to thank the city council for their support because I know the city manager and his staff has supported us in a great deal. And for all that appreciation, our board members decided to give each one of you a gift from our museums. So Tom, you mind bringing that up?
So I'd like to, just start this way, go that way.
It's your call.
Well, we better take care of the mayor first. Give him the mayor.
Thank you, Colonel. Thank you.
And thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
And Mike?
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I'm going, my first name, but I know everybody here's a crazy. And John?
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about a sip? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Colonel. I'd now like to call up Dakota Lowe.
Good evening, gentlemen. Wasn't actually planning on speaking tonight. I was asked by-
Dakota, or Mr. Lowe, would you state your name and address, please?
My name's Dakota Lowe.
Address, please.
What's that?
Address, please.
608 Mill Springs Court.
Thank you.
Wasn't planning on saying anything tonight. I was asked by a bunch of my neighbors to come. Everyone's noticed a very large increase in their water bill and we're just wondering why the water bills have gone up hundreds of dollars in the last month. Most of my neighbors say their water bill indicates that they're using, you know, tens of thousands of gallons, more than what they think they're using, as does mine. We're wondering if there's not some kind of mistake in the meter reads or something else that we're not privy to in the calculation of the water bill and I'm just asking for an explanation of that. So.
That we're not actually supposed to engage during this time, but I would just say this, that you could make contact through the utility billing department and there are steps that you can take to find out and see, you can request meter checks, et cetera, if there are grounds to justify that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Having no more visitors to come forward, we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A is a YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to approve by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of October 21st, 2014, and B, payment of material claims in the amount of $704,143.92. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. This time we'll adjourn as the YMA and we'll reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is a consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A, the minutes of the regular meeting of October 21st, 2014; payment of material claims in the amount of $568,897.3; C, accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number SL0000009140803 for the construction of approximately 925 linear feet of 8-inch sewer line and appurtenances to serve the City of Yukon Legacy Lakes Edition Phase II Sewer Line Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma; D, accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number WL0000009140804 for the construction of approximately 300 linear feet of 6-inch water line and appurtenances to serve the City of Yukon Legacy Lakes Edition Phase II Water Line Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma; E, accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number SL000009140794 for the construction of approximately 2,540 linear feet of 8-inch and 2,240 linear feet of 12-inch sewer lines and appurtenances to serve the City of Yukon Frisco Ridge Edition Phase II Sewer Line Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma; F, accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number WL000055140793 for the construction of approximately 990 linear feet of 6-inch, 3,000, 135 linear feet of 8-inch and 670 linear feet of 12-inch water lines and appurtenances to serve the City of Yukon Frisco Ridge Edition Phase II Water Line Extension Project, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma; G, getting the, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for November 18th, 2014, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Sir?
There is a typo.
Yeah, I was going to say.
The county?
Item F.
Yeah.
It should be Canadian County.
I would entertain a revised motion to approve with the correction on item F for the county. Who made that motion, Doug?
So moved.
Richard made them.
Yeah, and seconded.
Revised?
And seconded.
Very good.
Yeah.
Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Item 2 is reports of boards, commissions and city officials. I believe I saw Mr. Klein here for our Board of Adjustments.
Good evening, city manager, mayor, council members and Yukon citizens. I'm Russ Klein, Chairman of the City of Yukon's Board of Adjustment. Been on the board for 10 years and chair for the past eight years. You have a copy of our business that we conducted last year. Before I get into that though, I want to go over right quick and remind everybody and particularly our audience. Ward 1, Sherri Houston is a member of the Board of Adjustments. Ward 2 is Rena Holland. Ward 3 is Joe Horn. Ward 4, Russ Klein. And at the large, at large, Buddy Carpenter. We have several things that basically, the board members know this, I'd kind of like to tell our citizens, you know, the Board of Adjustments, we've got two basic tasks that we're responsible for. One is administrative overview. We hear and decide appeals where it's alleged that there's an error in the enforcement of the Yukon City ordinance. The second and probably the most important and one that you need to know the most about is we authorize upon appeal a variance request by a citizen so that the spare of the ordinance can be observed, public safety and welfare secured and substantial justice done. Such variances may be granted upon a finding of the Board of Adjustments. And there's a couple items here that should be of significance. There's extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the size of the property. That's the shape and topography. The application of the ordinance to this particular piece of property would create an unnecessary hardship not self-imposed by the owner or the developer. That's very important. Such conditions are particularly, are peculiar, such conditions are peculiar only to the particular piece of property involved. In other words, it's a one-shot deal for your particular property. Relief granted would not cause substantial detriment to the good or impaired purposes and the intent of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan, provided however that there's no variance may be granted for the use of land or building or structure that is prohibited by the ordinance. Council members, each one has got a copy of our report for this last year's activities. I would point out as an interest, we had a lot more variances, different types of variances requested than what we normally have. Generally, it's height regulations, using up, using up too much of the yard for a substructure or some case like this. So you have this, it shows our meetings, there's a nice pie chart colored and breaks things down so you can see what our agenda items were. And then there's the agenda items that are spelled out in its entirety. Does the council have any questions at this point of the board? In closing then, I'd like to acknowledge my Ward 4 councilman, Mike McCarron, and thank him for retaining me. This is something I enjoy very much to do for my community. And lastly, I'd like to thank our Department of Commons Development, Mitch Horton and particularly Kathy Johnson for putting together the stats and our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 3, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount not to exceed $39,605 for pipe bursting repair project of 387 linear feet located from Main Street and Garth Brooks to Cedar Avenue to be paid from the Public Works Water and Wastewater Distribution Account as recommended by the Public Works Director.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? I would just like to say I'm very proud of the amount of pipe bursting over the last couple of years that we've been able to achieve. It's an amazing and very, very necessary function. Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 4 is consider approving an engagement agreement with Public Facilities Investment Corporation, LLC, in effect until August 19th, 2019, to include planning, programming, design, development, financing and construction services for Regional Sports Complex to include soccer, baseball, softball and other community spaces as recommended by the city manager. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to ask about the, I didn't see anything in there at this point about the financial or the cash outlays and stuff and I know some of it'll be determined on what we ask them to do, but is there any sense of that at this point?
Not at this point. There is a follow along agreement that will fully design or fully lay out all the scope of work from beginning to end and all of the cash requirements all the way through.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And will we vote on those?
Yes, absolutely.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 5 is to consider approving a request from David Rhodes on behalf of the Commons of Yukon, LLC regarding an application for a proposed sign deviation from the PUD for the Commons Office Development, changing the requirement for Section 8.6 signage, attractive land situated in the southeast quarter of Section 30, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, northwest corner of Health Center Parkway and Professional Circle, Canadian County, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I've got several things. When I read through all the material that was in there and I guess there's someone here representing them, David is, yeah, the, Mr. Rhodes. When I read through all of the material, there was, when I read through the preliminary notes that came from the Planning Commission, there were quite a few issues with the original preliminary plat and have all those been resolved at this point in time?
Yes, sir.
And there's nothing, nothing still outstanding with that. And I guess, I guess the question I really, really had was, I noticed that they said they were going to put up three by four signs. Is that now going to be the standard throughout the entire Commons?
If, if I might, Mr. McCarron, the final plat has actually already been approved.
Approved, okay.
This is an amendment to that previously approved plat.
Well, but then in the original plat, the, all the signage was on the ground.
That's the preliminary plat.
Yeah. And that's what I was asking him, is that now going to become a standard throughout all of your buildings in the Commons? That's, that's my question there.
Yes, the max, maximum size would be three by four.
Three by four and those will be then mounted on the building as opposed to down on the ground where the other ones are.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only questions I had about that. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Item 6 is to consider approving ordinance number 1303, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances to the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Sections 18-26 and 18-30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by changing the name of the Community Development to Development Services, adopting the International Building Code 2009 Edition and providing additions, insertions and deletions thereto and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Item 6A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1303.
So moved. Second.
Do we have any discussion on the emergency? No discussion, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 7, consider approving ordinance number 1304, an ordinance which provides amendment
to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending certain sections of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by adopting the International Fuel Gas Code 2009 Edition and providing additions, insertions and deletions thereto and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 7A is to consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1304.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 8A, consider approving emergency clause of ordinance number 1305, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Sections 18-52, 18-60 and 18-62 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by adopting the National Electric Code 2011 Edition and providing additions, insertions and deletions thereto and declaring an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 8A, consider approving emergency clause of ordinance number 1305.
So moved. Second.
Do we have any discussion on the emergency? Having none, call the roll.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 9 is to consider approving ordinance number 1306, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Sections 18-81 and 18-82 by adding new section 18-84 to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by adopting the International Plumbing Code 2011 Edition and providing additions, insertions and deletions thereto and declaring an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? We're almost through it, guys. I know it's getting a little redundant. Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Item 9A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number 1306.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 10, consider approving ordinance number 1307, an ordinance which proves, which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Sections 18-106, 18-107 and 18-111 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by adopting the International Mechanical Code 2009 Edition and providing additions, insertions and deletions thereto declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 10A is to consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1307.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 11 is consider approving ordinance number 1308, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Sections 18-136 and 18-137 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by adopting the International Residential Code 2009 Edition for one and two family dwellings and providing additions, insertions and deletions thereto and adding section, and by adding section 18-140, remumering the regulation of carports and accessory structures and declaring an emergency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hang in there. Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 11A is to consider approving emergency clause of ordinance number 1308.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item twelve, consider a request by Kraft and Tell on behalf of Bounce Academy to rezone the property at eighteen oh one West Vanamette from I one Light Industrial District to C three Restricted Commercial District as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item twelve A is to consider approving ordinance number thirteen oh nine, an ordinance amending ordinance number six fifty-seven Appendix A of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that part of the southwest quarter of section nineteen Township twelve North Range five, west of the Indian Meridian Canadian County, Oklahoma, be changed from I one Light Industrial to C three Restricted Commercial District, and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Item twelve B, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number thirteen oh nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item twelve C is to consider approving a preliminary plat for tract of land situated within the southwest quarter of section nineteen Township twelve North Range five, west of the Indian Meridian Canadian County, Oklahoma, that's ten eighty-one West Vanamette, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item thirteen is city managers report information items only.
I think, uh, with the number of young people that we have in the audience, that a little bit of explanation might be appropriate so you understand what we just went through. We passed a series of ordinances related to the building codes of this city. We sat through two weeks of somewhat spine-tingling conversation about building codes, and, uh, studied it for quite some time. And then, after two weeks of discussion of these, uh, codes, we passed them after full, fully being vetted. Secondly, uh, you heard the term "emergency clause" being used a lot in the mayor's comments. While most of us think that that is an unfortunate term to be used, it is in fact straight from the state law, uh, that if you want something to be passed and be effective today, you pass an emergency clause. So that's what we just went through here for the last several minutes. I know it's much ado about the same thing, but it is fully according to the Open Meetings Act and the state law of the state of Oklahoma. I guess the first thing I want, can you believe that, uh, in a couple of, two and a half weeks, we are actually going to have, uh, the opening of Christmas in the park? It doesn't seem possible that two thousand and fourteen has flown by this fast, but on, uh, November the twenty-second, that's Saturday, November the twenty-second, uh, we're gonna have the lighting of four and a half million do, uh, four and a half million lights across, uh, three parks that will just be beautiful. We will entertain over a quarter of a million people over a forty-one day period, um, and, uh, it's quite an event, so, uh, it's hard to believe it's here already. The next thing I'd like to talk to council about is, um, recycling and our sanitation services. Two and a half years ago, uh, the city of Yukon, uh, became, uh, the, uh, ruler of our own destiny as it relates to solid waste management. We set about the task of having our own, uh, sanitation trucks, uh, for both residential and, uh, commercial applications. Uh, we have improved our efficiency, uh, we've cut down on our maintenance expense, uh, by changing trucks, and, uh, we've done it all in two and a half years. What we are currently doing, by the way, at the end of this year, just in our recycling efforts alone, we're gonna cross over, uh, somewhere over, uh, one million tons of recyclables here in Yukon. Additionally, uh, we have set about the task to be in the commercial sanitation service business. Uh, we have purchased the equipment necessary to do that, and are providing our service at a much improved fee over what was proposed two and a half years ago. Also, by the end of this fiscal year, it is our intent to purchase the necessary equipment and hire the necessary personnel to provide for curbside big trash pickup on at least a quarterly basis throughout the city. Again, making us more efficient, and also getting stuff out of our waste stream that we currently pay to have disposed of, and we're able to sell it to a recycler, uh, and make money doing it. And finally, it is our intent, uh, that by the, um, June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, that we will have established a plan for opt-in curbside residential recycling. That means, uh, that somewhere in the neighborhood of five years after taking over the, uh, site recycling program from a group of very hardy volunteers that for almost twenty years had done it almost single-handedly, we have changed the face of solid waste for Yukon. Not only did we improve the delivery type of recycling, which was done from nine o'clock in the morning till noon on a Saturday, Genie, for almost twenty years by volunteers, we now have seven day a week recycling available at our transfer center. Very proud of that. The last thing, uh, is, I think, uh, I think it appropriate, Mayor, if you will allow me just a moment more, uh, to address a situation that has, uh, has been on the minds of many for the last couple of days. But without setting some background to that, I think that we do not fully understand the impact of, uh, what has happened to us in Yukon. Back in the early nineteen sixties, uh, the USDA was the major lender for, um, all water system improvements across the United States. And beginning at that time, the USDA said that if you want our wa, our money to go build your sewer system or your water line or whatever it is, that you will charge sixty percent of your water sales for sewer. That became the law of the land throughout the next forty years. Recently, and I, when I say recently in the terms of the federal government, that's a long time, but over the last ten to twenty years, other systems of, um, charging for water and sewer have taken place. And what we have done here over the last three, uh, actually, three years, is to, uh, extensively analyze our costs related to the delivery of fresh water and the treatment of wastewater in our community. Furthermore, we have thoroughly investigated all of the metro area and what the water and sewer rates are for all of them. We then set about the task of making sure that water paid for itself and that sewer paid for itself. After that investigation, what we found was, our water wa, rates were about right. So the first year, three years ago, we had no water rate in, uh, increase at all. That investigation also showed us that our sewer rates had been propped up by artificially high water rates, which was caused by charging a percentage. And as costs changed and as times changed, always we were behind. So in the effort to make sure that sewer paid for itself, we unbuckled sewer rates from water rates. And we are setting about the task to ensure that our rates are fair, and that they sustain our operations at a very professional and efficient manner. Also, over that time, we have raised our sewer rates to bring them in line with what it takes for that enterprise to be profitable. We have, for years and years, operated a dual sewer rate system here in Yukon. That simply means that from the months of April through September, our rates are low. That was developed as a, as a means to acknowledge that people water their yards and their flower gardens and their vegetable gardens, and that water doesn't go down in the sewer system. But then, come October, those rates go up. In the case that just occurred in this past billing cycle, the rates for sewer went from two dollars and ninety-three cents per thousand gallons to five dollars and sixty-three cents per thousand. And that's the, that's the re, result of the dual rate system that we currently operate under. We are, uh, our finance director and the city treasurer, as well as the utility department, is working diligently with Public Works and others so that we can go to a single rate system versus a dual rate system. It will cause summer rates to be somewhat higher than what they have in the past, and cause winter rates to be somewhat lower than what they have in the past. But I believe in all fairness, it, particularly when you have our utility rate increases that occur on October first, occurring at the same time that we go from summer rates to winter rates, so you feel the effect of a double whammy. In an effort to try to minimize that, we are going to come to council in the very near future with a proposal to, uh, to abandon the dual rate sewer system, and to go to a single rate system for charging for sewer services. It should also be noted, I think, two other things very quickly. The city's biggest risk for an immediate financial impact does not occur in freshwater delivery. Our biggest risk occurs at the side of the treatment of our wastewater north of town. The costs there are much greater than what they are for freshwater delivery. So we've got to acknowledge as a city to remain sound, that those risks are there, and we've got to guard against any violation of any regulation that could cause any other unexpected expenditures and fines. Finally, we have heard for decades that there will come a time when water will be more valuable than oil. Richard, we have talked about it often. The time is here. It's not out there in the future decades. It's here. The Oklahoma City Water Trust has notified us that within the Oklahoma City Water System, water rates alone, I'm not talking about sewer rates, I'm talking about water rates, will increase ninety percent over the next ten years. They anticipate spending over two billion dollars to provide freshwater to the metropolitan area. The fact of the matter, it is here. Today, I received what the new rates are for the community I last served, and while we charge a base rate of eleven dollars and eleven cents, that community is now charging a base rate of twenty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. While we are charging three dollars and sixty-eight cents per thousand as our base rate for the purchase of water over the first two thousand gallons, they are now gonna charge twelve dollars and seventy-one cents. The day that water is more valuable than oil has arrived. Mayor, with that, I will close my remarks and stand ready for your questions.
Do, uh, any of the council have questions for our city manager? No questions, move on to item fourteen, new business. No new business, we'll go on to item fifteen, which is council discussion. Mr. McCarron?
Oh, why not? Uh, I'm excited about Christmas in the park, even though it's, it's coming a lot sooner. I've been harassing folks. I hope we get, you know, the, the bridge over on Garth Brooks open before Christmas in the park gets here, but I think that's coming. I want to thank, uh, Brian, uh, Filippone for coming up this evening and speaking to us, and Rick Caccini as well. Uh, Mr. Lowe has, uh, probably already left, I think. And special thanks to Russ Klein. I, you know, I, I have, uh, known very few people that have been as dedicated in the service to the city of Yukon over the years through several of the people that have sit in this chair, and, uh, have, have put in time and, and, and given us good decisions for a long time. So I would appreciate him, and I wanted him to know that publicly. Uh, and I also want to mention Arnold back there with the pipe bursting projects that have been going on, and Bill with the, the, uh, a lot of the s, other things that are going on in, in, in the waste treatment stuff. Guys are doing a, a really good job. And, uh, I mentioned the other day to somebody that we were pipe bursting, and we'd done over seven and a half miles, I guess, going to, on our way to ten, and, uh, they just shook their head, you know, that, that, I don't think anybody else is looking that forward down and, and taking care of their infrastructure as we have. So we've got some really tremendous opportunities. This is an exciting time for Yukon. And with that, uh, I'll, I'll close my comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Russell?
Uh, I would just like to thank everybody that came tonight for their presentations and, uh, just being here for their city. And Mitch, you've got your inspections, I mean, you've got your new codes, so get ready. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Yanda?
Uh, I just want to say thank you to Mitch Horton, Mike Sigler, for your extensive work you did on the code of ordinances, I know that had to be a lot of fun. And also to Russell Klein and all those that sw, serve on the Board of Adjustments, thank you for serving the city of Yukon. And Grayson, thank you for the explanation about the water and the rates. Appreciate that.
Mr. Alberts?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things, uh, to Mr. Andrews' class.
You're there now.
To Mr. Andrews, thank you for bringing a, a group of kids this evening and listening. This is the longest meeting that any class in the last ten years that I've been here has seen, so thank you. But it, it's kinda like watching paint dry, but this is what governments like a lot of times, so it's important that we do the little things. There was a lot of work done by the people that have been thanked tonight that prepared us for this meeting. So I, I do thank you for sitting and listening and coming and having an interest, uh, in your, in your community. And then I'd like to, uh, warn and thank and encourage the people that, um, are about to be inundated by all of the people driving through our community, looking at the lights and the different things, to make sure that you have patience, because, uh, we're showing off our community, uh, there's shopping here, there's spending money, the shop, uh, Shop Yukon will be starting before long, and it's all part of, uh, an image. And I think that it's important that we project a positive image, and sometimes when I'm trying to get out of my house, down to Seven Eleven to get me a little cappuccino, I might, it's a fifteen-minute drive to make it about two hundred yards, so bear with us, and I, I, I appreciate the, the, the patience of the people, e, and even in Ken's neighborhood and just all the traffic that we'll see, but it, it's a positive thing for our city. And then lastly, again, Grayson, thank you about the water, and it is, that's something, Genie, you were here, I mean, for more than a decade, um, we've been working on the issue of water, uh, but I hope that maybe someone might call Mr. Lowe, is it Dakota Lowe, and let him know. And, and just so you all know, the, the discussions, the visitor section that the mayor has at the beginning of the meeting, that's just to bring information to us. This isn't a meeting where we engage in a conversation back and forth like maybe you'd have at a student council meeting or something where there's a conversation. Our rules don't allow for that, so I, I'm, I, I hate that the people that were concerned about the water issue, I wish they had a sta, had stayed to hear the explanation about what was going on with water. But just so you all know, when you come in front of us and ask a question, that's to bring us information. We'll take action, but we can't engage in a conversation with you, so hopefully, Mr. Bottom, someone maybe from the city might call and offer that group of people an explanation they can listen to the meeting on the...
This afternoon at twelve-thirty, that was delivered, that same message.
To Mr. Lowe?
Well, no, to, uh, a different party that was calling about the same issue.
Well, now it's recorded and to be on TV, and they can go and, uh, check the internet for it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Klein, for, uh, coming forward, giving us a report on the Board of Adjustments. I, uh, have been privileged to have served on that board previously, and I know that, uh, you, you guys, uh, listen to some unusual things from time to time, and I appreciate you coming and keeping us informed. Uh, we are all very concerned about our, uh, water bills, um, all of our monthly bills, as far as that goes, but, you know, we can't forget the flip side of, uh, saving money when it comes to our water bill, and that's by conserving our water and how we use it. So if we're, if we're more selective about how we use our water, we're probably gonna be happier with that bill that we see at the end of every month. I'm also looking forward to the holidays here in Yukon. There are so many things that, uh, make this time of year such a, an exciting time to be here, and I hope that, uh, we all take advantage of it, and I hope that we have, if we have extended family out there, that we can invite to our city to enjoy it as well. I hope that we do so. And with that, we'll stand adjourned.